He was sick when he got back to Florida. After he in Florida, he was very sick.
Yeah.
It's a really now. We're one of the only families who has like.
Very.
Showing my.
Yeah, Ellie actually started out. Good. I feel like it actually. I never. And maybe that's why it's easy to not know. It's only you and I. Right there.
Hello. Remember Tina?
Yeah.
My God, Steve.
I just think the new girl.
The same words here.
Yeah, we knew. That's weird. I think we're seeing. But we probably think that was all we said. Yes, or.
Oh. I swear.
I thought they. Coming from far away. Yeah, this is. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was gonna see it. Show you the virtue of justice. There's actually like a trump now if they if he ever gets. I'm not sure where they do it. Speaking. There it is. Seems about the same. Very. Are you?
It's great.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
It's basically somewhere every year. Now, are you know, there is. There is. Except that. So if they ever.
Sure.
It's it's also. Very. I do. Would have to. What's happening? Well, that's. Over time, the. Here you have. What's up? She has a certain.
Bad. Because you say. Well, I think he was. Holding the accident. It says.
It's.
All in.
It's inside that. That's something.
Yeah.
The.
They increased.
Yeah. Like she.
Yeah. So.
I don't think she did too. Yeah. Actually.
Yeah.
Not.
And there's a pretty.
Yeah.
They got very. I do. This is part of the. I love. When they're alone and they're. Oh, that's.
Is that?
I'm trying to. Oh, sure. Number four. She does that now. I was like. They were like. They were like. Stay. Okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to begin the meeting. Welcome to the March 5th, 2024 West Coast and Township Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance of our United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here with us tonight. I have a couple announcements, just one. That this meeting may be audio and video recorded by third parties, so everybody in the audience is aware. And I'm going to begin with the public comment section. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment about something that's not included on the agenda tonight, now is the time to make it. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none, then we'll open the meeting. We're going to move on to our first action item, which is going to be the public hearing and possible approval of ordinance number 1-2024, amending the West Coast and Township zoning ordinance to permit motorcycle sales and service as a use by conditional use in the I-2 Light Industrial Zoning District.
So I will start by just introducing some exhibits on behalf of the board. This is a proposed amendment to your zoning ordinance. So there are state requirements under the municipality's planning code for things that the board has to do in order to adopt an amendment to zoning. So the first is we have to advertise tonight as a public hearing. We did that in the Daily Local News on February 10th and February 26, 2024. I have the proof of publication as a board exhibit. The second thing we need to do is we need to send a copy of the ordinance to the Daily Local and Chester County Law Library for public inspection. And we did that on February 15, 2024. This actually came about as a result of a petition that was filed by Luke Colagreco on behalf of Hannah Harley-Davidson. So I put that petition in just so that the minutes reflect that this was something that was petitioned by a resident or a proposed resident, proposed business owner in the township. The fourth exhibit is the ordinance had to be sent to the Chester County Planning Commission. And the county planning commission issued a review letter on February 23, 2024. And then the last procedural requirement is that the West Coast and Planning Commission had to review this ordinance and provide a recommendation to the board. And they did that at their meeting on February 13, 2024. And their recommendation was that the board adopt the ordinance. So those are the procedural. Board exhibits, so I just want to have the minutes reflect that we did what we were required to do. The applicant was here, Gina Gerber is here representing Hannah Harley-Davidson. They had petitioned the board to allow this use in the I-2 district, I-2 Light Industrial District. So the proposed change is very simple, it just adds it as a conditional use. And it says that the area involved regulations for the use would be the same as they are for the I-2. And then it adds a specific parking requirement for this particular use. So that's the extent of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks very much. Does the board have any questions or comments on the ordinance as it's written?
I have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
It's just to do with the Chester County Planning Commission's response, letter number eight in their letter talked about potential improvements by PennDOT on US 202 High Street and Matlock Street. And it was a recommendation there that the applicant and township contacted PennDOT regarding possible right-of-way impacts of this project that might be coming down the road. So I was just curious as to whether anyone had done that and whether there was any knowledge of potential impacts to this property, the parcel of land from these potential PennDOT improvements in the future.
Could we make that one of the conditional uses?
It's just the ordinance.
I know, but I'm saying when we get to that point.
So.
In any meeting.
Has anybody from the township contacted PennDOT regarding this project?
No, we've not.
Has anyone from the applicant contacted?
We have not directly contacted them. That being said, I can tell you that nobody has received any notification of any imminent projects by PennDOT in this particular intersection. That's not to say that they won't happen. But I can tell you that the applicant will be willing to work with PennDOT, but frankly, PennDOT would have the right to demand additional right-of-way along its property line if they were to make improvements. And our client has no intention of obfuscating any intent on PennDOT's. But I'm not aware, my client's not aware of any immediate improvements that are being made at this time. Okay, thanks. When are these slated to begin, do we know?
I don't even think it's in any tenure plan, to be honest. I know that we had the conversation when the Quality Inn came in and remember they were talking about that issue was raised about that project. I don't know if that's the same, would be in the same project, but if it's not even in a project that's been approved for design yet, you're talking 10 years before anything would even get to building with the way the PennDOT projects work.
I thought we'd heard that some residents on South High Street and around the 202 interchange with High Street had received survey letters from PennDOT asking for input on. They did study.
They did conduct a survey in that area. They had survey crews on South High Street recently, I would say within the last two months, within the last two months. But that's not, I don't believe that that's part of this related to this property since this is on Matlock Street.
It's just confusing to me that this PennDOT project might stretch from that ramp area of 202 on the bypass all the way up to Matlock Street. You know, presumably Chester County Planning got some view as to whether this is, you know, within the scope of their vision for this area, is in this stretch of 202 down the road. So I was just curious, I mean, it sounds like it's only in the planning stage, it might be years and years away. Satisfied with your answer, so. To me, it's okay.
Okay. I have one other thing, but.
Sure.
Number five, I just wanted to make sure that the proposal is going to be consistent with the township's comprehensive plan also. That's going to be.
Well, it says that it's located within commercial office industrial infill, so I think the use is a commercial use. So based on the township's, the 2019 comprehensive plan, you look at the future land use plan, and it is consistent because it's saying that if your, that future land use plan in your comprehensive plan shows it as commercial office and industrial infill, which this project is proposing.
And then again, just one more thing from the county planning commission. They mentioned landscaping and vegetative screening between the parking area and the adjoining roadway network. So I don't know if that's something that we would revisit maybe during the conditional use or something we can have, you know, conversation with you guys about. Because I was looking at one of the photos, right? And there's a big lawn out front.
You're learning my surprise.
Oh. I'm joking, I'm joking. We have to develop a landscape plan as part of the conditional use application. And we'll prove that as an exhibit.
Excellent, okay, good.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to. I'll save you. Okay.
So is there a motion, then, to approve the ordinance number 1-2024?
I'll make it.
Okay, John, I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, John and Tina. Is there any public comment on motion of the ordinance? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number five, which is the public hearing and possible approval of ordinance number 2-2024, amending the regulations for historic inn outlined in the West Coast and Township zoning ordinance in the R3B Flexible Design and Conservation District, Zone C.
So I'm going to run through similar exhibits for the minutes to reflect that we followed the state law requirements. The first is we advertised tonight's hearing in the Daily Local News on February 19th and February 26th. We have those proofs of publication. I sent a copy of the ordinance to the Chester County Law Library and Daily Local on February 15th. Chester County Planning Commission reviewed it and issued a letter of February 23rd. And your planning commission issued review at the February 13 meeting, and the minutes are attached. So this ordinance, Mr. Gavron is here representing an applicant who is interested in purchasing two parcels from Girakiin LLC, one with the Greystone Hall is located, and the second is where the, I always forget the name of this, the Carriage House is located. They were before you at a prior board meeting explaining what they'd like to do to that. The board already adopted an amendment to the R3B regulations, and they're simply asking for two changes to that to address a different maximum height of the building and also to allow 80 guest rooms as opposed to 60. So again, fairly narrowing scope and limitations. So if anybody's any questions on the ordinance itself, Mr. Gavron's here and I can give you help as well.
All right, thanks very much. Are there any questions for either Krista or Mr. Gavron on the ordinance? Okay, hearing none. Are there any public questions or comments on this ordinance? Yes, Mr. White, can you come up?
Good, good evening, everyone. Douglas White, 10-01, would you? I have some questions about the concept of the inn itself and also the increase. Are there plans to have a liquor license as far as this project? Yes? Is a liquor license allowed that close to residence?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, I think it might be 600 feet, but that's to liquor licenses, so you might want to check that. Are you planning to have a banquet hall?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how the banquet hall defining that. My client, John Doppus, is here, can talk a little bit conceptionally about what may be inside. There's certainly going to be rooms for.
Are you planning on having a banquet hall type of affairs or conferences?
I guess I would have to understand the definition of a banquet hall. I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know.
Well, someone wants to have a big barbit, but you want to make, can you do that?
That's not really the nature of the type of property that we are.
Okay, so you're not going to have banquet facilities?
With limited function, I mean, it's not just the size we're talking about. If it's 20 people, then I can't say no to that. If it's 300 or 500, certainly not.
Okay, conference center?
Yeah, you say.
Are you planning on using, okay, is the carriage house property going to be part of this project?
Yes, yes.
Okay, is it going to remain a separate parcel? Or are you going to combine them?
I don't think we could do a lot like Justin, but.
Okay. Okay. Krista, the original conditional use order says that the.
Right, and they need to amend that. So if this ordinance were to pass and the applicant were to come forward with a conditional use application to use the Greystone Hall as historic inn. For hotel, it need, they need to first amend condition 60A of the conditional use order, and then they need to seek approval for a hotel use. So the board is aware of that.
Okay, so originally, the manor house lot can't be subdivided, but it also can't be combined with another lot?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the condition reads it can't be subdivided. It says, basically what the condition says is that it, the testimony was that they were going to use that as a community house for the HOA, the Adult Act of Adult. So that is the part of the conditional use they'll have to amend. As far as the lot lines and merger or not, I'm not familiar enough to know whether that would be prohibited. I don't believe it is.
Okay, so if a lot can't be subdivided, does that mean it can't be then combined with another lot?
No, it means it can't be carved off into multiple lots for multiple uses.
Okay, so can the carriage house be then combined with the manor house? Is that allowed the way to?
I don't want to give you an answer without looking at that specific issue, Dr. White, I apologize. I will, I will look at that.
That's all right. I am kind of concerned about this whole concept due to traffic noise, lighting, et cetera, and or and being in the middle of a residential development. And let's see, also add up here. And you're doing this in an effort to preserve the manor house, correct? To give it a use, but this won't guarantee its preservation, correct?
Well, certainly wouldn't guarantee that it won't get hit by a meteor, but I think it would guarantee that it's going to stay. It's going to be, the way the ordinance is written, it's going to be the highest, it's going to be the highest heat of any of the buildings.
Okay.
Property, which was a recommendation by the planning committee, which your honor unanimously recommended this.
Well, actually, I did.
I think you did, I think the last, the second time.
Not the second time. Anyway, well, you can review the minutes, but that's okay.
Says zero vote, no.
Yeah, it was, I think it was.
Well.
Dr. White, too, this is going to have to go back to a conditional use. I mean, this is just the ordinance amendment, so a lot of your concerns can definitely be brought forward and the board can consider as part of the conditional use if and when the applicant comes forward.
Okay, but just, okay, focusing on what's here in front of you, the matter at hand. I would just be opposed to increasing it due to traffic. Basically that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. I have a comment from a resident who's not in attendance tonight that I told would announce tonight, so I'm going to read that out loud. It's from Ms. Margie Swart, and she says, Supervisors, I respectfully request that you delay or deny passing ordinance number 2-2024 for the following reasons. All parcels outlined in red are owned by Girakiin LLC. Unless and until all parcels are sold and the approved subdivision plan is built, I don't think it is wise to approve another plan or amend an ordinance for the benefit of Girakiin LLC until the entirety of Greystone is complete and the 168 acres of open space are transferred to the township. Additionally, parcel P is part of the approved subdivision plan and part of the NID. As such, it cannot be redeveloped. She goes on to say, now that I've received confirmation that Girakiin LLC owns what is planned to be dedicated to the township and the same entity, Girakiin LLC owns the mansion and carriage house parcel, bolsters my strong opposition to the proposed ordinance.
So we, two things on that. One is that we just mentioned that in order to convert the use of carriage house from what was proposed to be part of a community facility for the HOA, the applicant will need to come back and seek the board's approval for that modification. So that handles the use. As far as parcel P, so what she's referring to there, when the board created a NID district, a Neighborhood Improvement District to incorporate the Greystone Development, parcel P was the parcel where the carriage house was located. That parcel is part of the NID, and that property owner is paying and is assessed an assessment, just like every other property owner within the Greystone community who's part of the NID. We did speak with counsel for Girakiin, Mr. Girakiin's here, and we also spoke, Mr. Gavron knows the issue. We consulted with somebody at Unicap who is the NID administrator, I guess, and they confirmed that nothing, there's nothing in the NID financing or the organizational structure of the NID that would prohibit the board from changing the zoning for any of the properties that are included within the NID. That doesn't, the NID does not deal with local zoning. It will require if and when the carriage house parcel, which was parcel P, if the use of that is changed, it may necessitate a change in the assessment for the NID payment. And that's something that the buyer and seller will have to work through and sort out, so.
Okay. I think that answers a lot of the questions.
Krista, I have a question on the NID. So that parcel P has a special assessment for the NID on it today. So the current owner or a future owner could, has the option to pay off that assessment, I believe, as part of the NID.
Yeah, and then you can pay it upfront.
And then, so if there's then a future improvement, if they pay it off and there's a future improvement, is there any ramifications for the NID? Or is at that point the NID is null and void for that particular parcel because they've already paid off the special assessment?
I did not ask that question, and I don't know. But we have an email from Ken Linder, the counsel of the Greystone NID, so we can ask him that question. I would think that there's some way to, because I think it's, the NID assessment is based on the benefits that that particular property gets from the improvements that were funded through the bond issue. So to the extent that that parcel is now going to be a higher percentage of benefits, so to speak, from the improvements, then there's probably a way to assess it, another assessment, but I need to get clarification on that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, hearing none, no other public comment?
Matt, sure, I apologize for interrupting. So we do have two, two comments on the live stream from Ms. Swart. I believe the first one's been answered as saying the carriage parcel is in the NID. Has the NID been made aware and an agreement of this change? I believe we've addressed that currently.
Yes, they are aware.
They are aware. And the other comment was parcel P is not assessed and if be currently, as Ms. Camp stated, that does not appear to be correct.
Well, Dean, I thought they were.
No, they're not because it's not being used currently. So I've been in a conversation with the administrator for months about this kind of change in use, once it changes to a beneficial use. Right now, they're considering that property is not benefiting by the NID, but once it becomes a hotel spot, it will be benefiting.
So I believe that goes back to Mrs. Camp's, Ms. Camp's point that it'll be reassessed once it benefits and will be paid for your working lands.
But just to be clear, because I think, you know, this text amendment, not itself exact change of use, that will be a subsequent measure which we're required, must have.
Right, right.
So tonight, we just have a text amendment to the existing zoning is what we're looking at.
Yeah, correct.
And I did look back at the minutes from when the original ordinance was approved, and Mr. Colagreco was before the board and stated that if there were any sort of NID fee or any fee that was associated with Neighborhood Improvement District, they would research that in a orderly.
There's actually a separate issue we want to.
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. Then is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2-2024?
Certainly.
Thank you, Tina. Last call for public comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six, which is the public hearing and possible approval of ordinance number 3-2024, amending chapter 60, which is the peddling and soliciting of the West Coast and Township Code of Ordinances.
So this one's a little easier because it's not zoning or subdivisions. We only had two exhibits to show we met the requirements this time in the Second Class Township Code. Any other ordinance just has to be advertised one week in advance of the hearing. So we did that in the Daily Local on February 26th. And we also sent a copy of the ordinance to the Law Library and Daily Local on February 22nd. The board reviewed these proposed changes. This came about as a result of your police department asking us to amend some of the provisions in chapter 60, which is your solicitation, peddling, and soliciting ordinance. We, basically the changes are that how the application is processed right now, if there's any criminal record for any, even a misdemeanor, they're unable to get a license, and that really doesn't comply with First Amendment free speech rights. So we changed that. And now it's specifically to if you're convicted of a felony offense or any misdemeanor involving dishonesty, dishonesty, deceit, fraud, theft, sexual offenses, or crimes of violence in the past 10 years. So that would be what they're really checking for to see whether you can be prohibited from getting a solicitation license. And then the rules of conduct, if, for example, I display on my property no solicitation, then that is a requirement that they have to comply with that. If they fail to comply with that, that is a violation of this particular code. And then the other is that same thing with if it's planned community, for example, Greystone, if the HOA decides that they don't want solicitation and they put up a sign, you'd be prohibited from soliciting. And then the violation enforcement, similar to how we did for the dog ordinance, we want to make this be a criminal proceeding rather than a civil proceeding, and that is consistent with what the Second Class Township would require. So those are really changes.
Okay, thanks. Are there any questions from the board or comments on this ordinance or those changes? No. No? Right, is there any public comment on those changes to this part of the ordinance? No? All right, great. Then is there a motion to approve ordinance number 3-2024?
Certainly.
Thanks, Nate, is there a second? Oh, second. All right, thanks, Tina. All in favor, say aye.
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 Great. All right, moving on to item number seven, which is the hearing for conditional use application number 1-2024 for Hannah Harley-Davidson proposing to conduct motorcycle sales and service at property located at 897 South Matlock Street in the I-2 Light Industrial Zoning District. And we will open the hearing procedurally. I'm going to hand it over.
Yes, and let me give you board exhibits, which you can. Gina and I did duplicate at her.
Oh, sure.
And I'll take these back and recycle to extend the board's.
Thanks.
So consistent with the ordinance that was just adopted, which I just want to remind everybody, because I'm reminding myself, in Pennsylvania, under the Second Class Code, ordinances don't go into effect for five days. So that ordinance, although you've adopted it, it's not technically in effect. So this conditional use hearing is being conducted knowing the ordinance was passed, but it's not technically in effect. So there would not be able, you would not be able to render a decision this evening on this particular application because we'd have to wait for the ordinance to be in effect. But in any event, they are seeking conditional use approval under the ordinance you just adopted, which amended section 84-38A17C to allow motorcycle sales and the sales of related merchandise and the operation of a repair shop for motorcycle service in the I-2 district. The applicant, which is Hannah Harley-Davidson, intends to reuse an existing building located at 897 South Matlock Street for a Harley-Davidson dealership and service center. The board exhibits are as follows. Board one is a cover letter from Ms. Gerber dated February 1st, 2024, attaching the conditional use application. Board exhibit two, proof of publication of tonight's hearing in the Daily Local on February 24th and February 27th. Board exhibit three was an affidavit of mailing from Shelby Smith dated February 20, 2024. She sent notice of tonight's hearing to all property owners within 500 feet of the property. Board exhibit four is an affidavit of posting, again submitted by Shelby Smith. On February 26th, she posted a notice of tonight's hearing on the actual property, and there is a photograph of that posting. Board exhibit five, this property was developed and it was previously used for the Kelly Sports. So this is a land development plan that was approved that shows the existing building that's there today, shows the parking, the access point, and it shows a proposed warehouse that I don't think was ever built in the back. Board exhibit six is exterior elevations. This came in with the applicant and their conditional use application of how they would renovate the facade and the building for its proposed use. Board exhibit seven is just an aerial tax map that shows you the property and where it sits in relationship to Route 202 and the adjoining properties. And board exhibit eight is a copy of the minutes from your planning commission meeting on February 13, 2024, where the board not only recommended the ordinance, but they also looked at the conditional use. also looked at the conditional use. I'm trying to see what they recommended.
They had no recommended conditions.
No recommended conditions, so there we go. So I'll turn it over. First, let me see if there's anybody in the audience that owns or leases property in close proximity that wishes to be recognized as a party. Okay, we will let the record reflect there are nobody asking for party status, and if that, I will turn it over to the applicant's counsel, Ms. Gerber.
Thank you. I'm happy to use the microphone if that would be helpful.
Yes, it went. Would it be okay if I took it with me?
Great.
All right, I feel like I'm super starting. So this is an application that was filed on behalf of Hannam Harley-Davidson. As you all know, just based from our previous presentation on the ordinance amendment, the applicant is looking to move into the existing Kelly Sports Building. The property is approximately 2.7 acres. It's located in the I-2 Light Industrial District of the township. The address is 897 South Matlack Street, and the property is currently owned by Stephen Kelly. Our, our client is proposing to purchase that property and to operate their business out of that. As you know, the use was just approved as part of an ordinance amendment, so we're here this evening to try and show you that this use is going to meet the standards for conditional uses set forth in your ordinance. I am joined this evening by Tom Hannam, who is the owner and operator of Hannam Harley-Davidson. He is going to be presenting testimony this evening on behalf of the applicant. So I'm going to just remind you of the use, which is motorcycle sales and sales of related merchandise and the operation of a repair shop for the motorcycles as an accessory use, provided the law on which the use is proposed does not abut a residential zoning district. So that is what we're here for this evening. Mr. Hannam is here with me this evening, and if it's okay, we're going to have him sworn in, and then he can start offering some testimony.
Here's your testimony about the file, be the truth, full truth, telling the truth, so be honored, so you're affirmed.
Yes.
Mr. Hannam, I'm going to hand this over to you. We're going to kind of share this microphone back and forth. I'm going to keep my voice up, and you're going to be the same, yes?
Yes.
All right.
I'm not a stammer.
Not a chance. Please state your full name, your position with the company, and the location of your company.
Thomas B. Hannam III, and our company is at 1011 West Borver Pike Media, Pennsylvania.
And what is your position with Hannam Harley-Davidson?
I'm the president.
Thank you. Are you authorized to speak here this evening on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Can you please tell us a little bit about the business, how long you've been running the business, and just generally how you operate your dealerships?
Sure. We have six locations in the northeast, and we started, 1954, my grandfather and father started the business. I grew up in West Chester, went to West Chester East, my sister went to West Chester Henderson, and we love the West Chester area. My sister couldn't be here tonight, I apologize. She's been at all the other township meetings, but had a long planned vacation. I did bring Sandy, who's our general manager of our Brandywine location, and she will be the general manager of, if this gets approved, of the West Chester location. She's not only our general manager for 15 years, but she's also my sister-in-law, so it's great to have her here tonight. So thanks, Sandy, for coming.
Thank you very much. And why is this location attractive for you?
It's just that it's a great area. Harley's involved in a consolidation program, which I think I discussed before, going from 700 dealerships down to 500, and Chester Springs location went away, Valley Forge, and we were interested in staying involved in the business, and so we agreed to consolidate our two locations into one location, and West Chester was one of the areas that Harley-Davidson really wanted us to move to and we wanted to move to. And unfortunately, back at the time when we started this all project, two, three years ago, there wasn't any properties available that we were interested in, so we bought properties on 322 Maple Zone property, which we still own, and we've been approved all through the Bethel Township and Concord Township, where we had our first original property. And then Steve Kelly's building went available on the market a while ago, and we found out about that in the 11th hour, and here we are, and I can't thank the township enough for all the cooperation over the last couple of months, knowing that we're in the 11th hour of this, and we have to be in someplace by the fall of 2024 to stay in good standings with Harley-Davidson. So thank you very much. I appreciate everything that you guys have been doing for us. Thank you.
I'm going to refer your attention to exhibit eight, which is a copy of the current deed for the property. Does this evidence that Stephen Kelly is the current owner of the property?
Yes.
And is exhibit eight, or a copy of a letter, letter of authorization that was signed by Stephen Kelly, which allows you to submit this application and submit testimony?
Yes, yes.
I'm going to also now refer your attention to exhibit eight-five, which is the recorded land development plan, last July, June 9th, 1999. Referring to that exhibit eight-five, record land development plan, could you identify the property and the location of the township and the existing permits?
That is far as.
I'm sorry, where is the property located because of the township?
It's on Matlack Street.
And is it down the northeastern side of Matlack Street, adjacent to Route 202?
Yes, it is.
What is the size of the buildings currently?
33,000 square feet.
And is there existing vegetation and landscaping on this property?
Yes.
Are there 59 available parking spaces available on the property?
Yes.
Do you intend on changing anything about the building footprint or the parking that's currently existing?
No.
I'm going to refer your attention to exhibit eight-six, which is an aerial view of this particular property. Looking at that aerial view, would you tell me a little bit about the uses, other uses that surround this property?
Yes, there's industrial around, there's some retail around, there's apartments across the street, and looks to be a variety of uses around.
And most of the areas are commercial or high-density residential, is that correct?
Yes.
Does the property abut any residential zoning districts?
No, not at all.
Did you direct the preparation of some architectural elevations, which we marked as exhibit eight-seven, proposed building elevation, the AGI architects?
Yes.
Referring to those building elevations, could you please tell us a little bit about what you are planning to do with this particular property?
Yes, we, AGI is a firm that is approved by Harley-Davidson, and it allows two or three different design firms to design any building that you're moving into, and this is a part of the new Harley-Davidson Fuel Program. They basically take the building in its existence, and they created this whole design that we're required to stand by pretty much to the T.
And is what you're proposing primarily aesthetic improvements to the exterior building?
Yes, and not changing the footprint at all.
So you're not proposing anything that would require land development approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you, do you propose some new landscaping for the property in conjunction with this new use?
Yes, we do.
Did you retain in focus planning and its landscape and architecture in order to prepare a rendered landscaping plan, which we marked as exhibit eight-eight?
Yes, we did.
Thank you. Would you, looking at this landscape plan, and I'm happy to provide you a mark up close for it.
Let me get my glasses on.
Would you tell the board a little bit about what you are proposing in terms of landscaping for this property?
Yes. I can read these. In addition to what's already there, I think we kept what was alive and looking good, and we added five shade trees, three ornamental trees, 77 shrubs, 228 perennials, and I think that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. And so you will be retaining the evergreens that are on the corners of the property along Matlack Street in order to provide some screening for the street, is that correct?
Yes.
And there will be some new landscaping included in some ornamental trees, as well as a plethora of shrubs and perennials along Matlack Street?
Yes.
And does this plan also show the re-shade trees, as well as some shrubbery and perennials along the side of the property, which abuts Route 202?
Yes.
Now, this plan shows the removal of some of the landscaping, is that accurate?
Yes.
And that's just for the purpose of cleaning up the overall appearance of the site and creating a nice streetscape here, is that right?
Yes, we understand the change in the exterior of the building, that, you know, change in the facade, the landscaping was necessary as well to make the whole place look good.
And you anticipate that this proposed new landscaping is going to work in conjunction with the existing landscaping to create a nice visual buffer and screen for the property?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that the site is going to be compliant with the landscaping requirements as they apply to this particular property?
Yes.
Would you please describe how a motorcycle dealership operation differs from a traditional car dealership?
Sure. As I said before, motorcycle dealerships, 90% of our inventory is inside and 10% of our inventory is outside, and a car dealership is pretty much opposite that, 90% outside, 10% inside.
And do you find that for a motorcycle dealership, most of the accessories and clothing and whatnot is something that folks like to buy when they're onsite purchasing their motorcycle?
Sure, and they come back from time to time, hopefully, as well, treat them nice.
Can you explain the difference between how motorcycles are serviced versus how car vehicles are serviced?
Sure, there's obviously, you know, how big they are, the racks that they are held by, all the safety, clean stuff, and things that we do are pretty similar to that, but motorcycles are not as big as trucies.
And how many existing motorcycle sales and service locations do you currently operate?
We have six locations in the northeast.
And I believe you indicated that Hannam's has been in business since 1954, so is that the years?
Yes, we, now we would like to celebrate our 70th anniversary of the relocation of the law.
And how have your existing dealerships been received by the surrounding neighborhood? Have you had any noise complaints?
Nope, surprisingly, we are very, very fortunate, regard, we like to be good neighbors in all the communities that we are. We do a charity event, we like to be a good neighbor to everybody that's in our communities, not what would, we haven't had any situations that I can be aware of, like cell phone number or email or all over all of our websites, and very rarely do I get a call, about anything.
Are potential customers encouraged to take the motorcycles for a test drive before they purchase?
If they have a motorcycle license, yes.
And how does that process work for Hannam's?
Well, they have to have a motorcycle license, we have, they have to sign a waiver, and then we either take them on a test ride on a specific route with a, with a salesperson, or they can go on their own, and we kind of map out a route for them, a route that's familiar and easy to drive.
So do you have a designated route that you encourage your customers to take?
Yes.
And in your experience, those routes do avoid residential areas to the extent possible, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you be willing to adjust a proposed test route based on neighborhood feedback or from township feedback if you were to receive any?
Absolutely.
What are your anticipated days and hours of operating at the time that this facility is opened?
Apparently, it would be Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 6, 10 to 7, our hours Saturdays, 9 to 4, closed on Sundays and Mondays. We were a seven-day work week before COVID, in a much different environment. Now, we are a lot of online sales, a lot of, it's a five-day work week, it's great for our company, and it's great for our staff and our families that work for us, that have two days off from work.
If the demand were there, would you consider opening seven days a week for motorcycle sales and services?
I, I don't see us going back to a seven-day work week in the near future, but we'd like to have the opportunity that, that exists, but just about all the dealers across the country are five-day work week right now.
You mentioned that the property has 59 parking spaces. Is that enough for the proposed use?
Absolutely. Our, our other locations, we and Chesford, have about 20, 25 parking spaces, 59 would be fantastic, would be great.
Have you experienced any issues with the 20 to 25 parking spaces?
Not at all. A lot of people come on motorcycles, so it's extra parking.
Are you familiar with the Kelly Sports business that occupied the property previously, based on your relationship with the owner, as well as your experience having been there a few times?
Absolutely. I played on Kelly Sporting Good Football Team at LA FA when I was eight years old. Steve Kelly's been a great friend, our family's been a great friend, Karen Kelly and my sister Ton were roommates together at college, and so we're very thankful that Steve was willing to work with us on this deal.
Do you anticipate that the traffic generated by this new use will be similar to or less than the traffic that was generated by Kelly Sports?
Sadly to say, they were a much busier organization than we are. They had 70 employees at one time, and then over 100 some other times, and we have 17 to 20 employees, and we're two or three people, maybe 20 transactions, 30 transactions a day, and I know they were much busier than that.
And your current operations, are you seeing roughly, on average, 35 customers, more or less, on a, on a day on the property?
Yeah, I would say on average.
Do you have any reason to believe that your proposed use of the property would create any adverse impact on the road networks that surround, that serve this property?
Nope, not at all.
And based on your low level of generated traffic, do you have any reason to believe that your use would require any construction of roadway improvements such as acceleration, deceleration lanes, or road lighting?
Not at all, no.
Is the building and property, sorry, compliant with the applicable I-2 district requirements in terms of the area involved?
Yes, I hope so.
And are the existing parking spaces on the property sufficient to meet the requirements for the proposed use based on the newly revised ordinance?
Yes.
Does, you said there's 59 spaces, the newly enacted ordinance requires 58 spaces for this particular use, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Sorry. Are any proposed changes to the existing location of the building or the parking areas that would somehow impact the existing setbacks?
No.
Do you anticipate any greater impact to adjoining properties as a result of this new use?
No.
And in your opinion, and based on your experience over these 70 years in operating motorcycle sales and service locations, are the setbacks on the property sufficient to protect the adjacent properties from any adverse impacts or interference by this proposed use?
Yes.
Has the West Ocean Sewer Authority recently advised that the property is allocated 668 gallons of daily sewer flow?
Yes.
And based on your experience with your other properties, is 668 gallons of daily sewer flow, or approximately 20,000 gallons per month, sufficient to meet the needs for your proposed use?
More than that, yes.
Are your existing properties operating at under 15,000 gallons per month out of busy month?
Yes.
And will you verify and confirm the sewer capacity prior to you likely building in accordance with the requirements?
Yes.
Is the proposed property, or sorry, is the property currently served by public water?
Yes.
And do you intend on continuing the public water usage for this property?
Yes.
Is there anything about the use of this property that you anticipate will increase the demand for water on the site?
No.
And will you confirm the availability of water and the capacity of water for this use with the appropriate entity prior to inhabiting the building?
Yes.
Do you anticipate any changes or improvements on the site that is somehow going to adversely affect the interior circulation of the property or the ability of emergency vehicles to access the property?
No.
Are you proposing any changes to the lighting of the building?
No.
Are you anticipating that there may be some new exterior lighting to the outside of the building as Harley's approved improvements to the site?
Yes.
And will those proposed building lights be compliant with township ordinance standards of their purpose?
Yes, yes.
Do you anticipate any impact to the stormwater runoff on this property?
No.
Are you proposing any new impervious or paved surface or building area on this property as part of the project? Do you have any reason to believe that this proposed use would have an adverse impact on the general health, safety, and welfare for the use or enjoyment of development of adjacent property? Do you think this is actually going to be of benefit to this area of the township?
I hope so, absolutely, yes. I think it's fantastic, it's a great area, it's great business, it's, it's a lot of fun, we have great teams, hopefully we'll be a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Hopefully, half as good as the Kelly Sports.
That is all the questions I have for this person. Any other board of persons? I'm sure we do. Who would like to start? All right, go ahead, Matt.
I actually have a clarification question to start with. You say that the existing building is 30,000 square feet?
I think it's 33. There are some second floors that have been built inside where it makes it vary, whether it's 30 or 33, I'm not sure exactly what the footprint is, it might be.
So is this, when I looked at exhibit eight-five, the previous land development plan from 1999 shows a building of 19,000, what was that?
428.
428 plus the extension warehouse of basically 5,000 square feet, so I was assuming there are some second floor areas that give you the additional.
Yes.
Footage to get to 30,000 square feet.
Yes.
So that does exist today then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course.
I just had a question. I mean, you mentioned, you know, the folks who own the property, the Kelly's.
Yes.
Did they, did you buy this property already or did they still want it?
We have an agreement of sale based on approval of the township.
Okay. Now, as part of that disclosure, did they inform you of any problems with flooding within the existing building at any time?
Not that I'm aware of or anything that they've ever had any problems there.
Because, you know, the property itself, if you look at it, you know, this is a flood related area right here.
Yes.
You know, which is lots of property, you know. Are there any concerns about flooding?
I don't have any concerns at all. I've been in and out of that property my entire life. I've never seen anything. And with the amount of stormwater management that they have there, I think it's very, the building really sits up high on the property. If you drive into the parking lot, it kind of feels like the building's up, you know, kind of above everything else. So I don't think there's been any issues there in the past and I don't foresee anything, you know, happening there.
And there's no intention at this point of any change or improvements to the existing stormwater mitigation?
Not at this point in time. We will probably come back in the future if we are lucky enough to get approved for possible additions and things of that nature that would address the stormwater management.
Now, did you want to include this, the items that are brought up by the Trifter County Planning Commission regarding contacting Pendot? Would that yourself be appropriate, if you include this as a condition of use?
Yeah, I actually was going to ask Gina if they would accept as a condition just reaching out to Pendot to get an understanding of what, if any, future possible improvements would be needed and if that would impact anything that you're doing and just report back to the township.
We're happy to make the phone call and report back.
I have a question relative to the stormwater or along that topic. I believe since Kelly was built, there have been other, I guess the left of that if you're standing on High Street, buildings that have been built after Kelly's was built. And if that's a correct statement, then my concern would be that the stormwater engineering practices should be looked at now before occupancy, so that you have a picture of what it is now, because buildings have been built around there. Across the street you have the point, which is going to change a lot of the flow. So I would be more concerned about looking at it now than getting in there and down the future looking at it, just because of the building, different buildings that are being built.
Really, you know, I've been looking at the buildings that have been built around us and the building that's being built currently behind. And they all have their own stormwater management situations that I think would control all order on their property. Steve's property being, you know, two and a half, two and three quarters acres and the way that it sits there, I don't see any money for anything to be an issue there. Really, this is, I mean, this is really a long shot chance for us. If we don't get an approval at this meeting, we're, unfortunately, we are really being helped to be done by our many, some other company. This has been going on for two and a half, three years now. And if we do not meet guidelines, they're going to be taking money away from us. There's going to be a lot of hardship for our employees. There's a lot of things that could happen going down the road. And we'd really love to much just the location. If we can move into this property in the fall, get applied for our permits, get additional use approval when it's appropriate in the next week or so, we're all going to make this right to be a great neighbor. If not, we're going back to Naples now because we have to be somewhere in the fall.
And I appreciate that, I do.
Just to be honest.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
What our family's going through.
And I sympathize with that, but, you know, I'm just concerned about the environment too, that's all.
I totally agree too. If there was anything that, you know, comes up where there was an issue on the property but, you know, runoff or anything coming on and flooding, we would certainly address it immediately, you know, in any way, shape or form that we could, whatever the township would require, we'd definitely be willing to do and work with any situation down the road. And we have done that with all the townships and we have a great relationship. If you've talked with Middletown Township, our media location, Chatsford Township, how we've been involved with them, with Rainy White Battlefield reenactments, anything that's had to do with our property, Broadway, New Jersey, Electric City in Scranton, Freedom Valley, Bucks County, we have an excellent relationship with all the townships that we reside in and we've worked very well with them and have never had any issues whatsoever.
One other question I have is relative to the maintenance that's going to be done on motorcycles in there. Is there any, where is the waste going to go? Is there going to be an underground storage tank or above ground storage tank?
Everything is safety clean above.
Above ground?
Yep, above ground. Safety clean comes, we put everything in tanks above ground, they come and clean it out once a week and removes from the facility.
Okay, are they like fiberglass tanks or?
Or metal, metal tanks.
Metal tanks? And they come out weekly and?
And we drain clean them out, yes.
Okay. And where does that waste go?
Uh, to safety clean.
Okay.
And they deal with the environment.
Okay.
Great things to know.
Nate, did you have a?
Yeah, I did. Would the landscaping, including the trees, ornamental trees and shrubbery be native species?
That could be a good question.
I'm not in. They were shovel heads or pan hats, I can help you out.
Could you have a link to your section that's together for us? And if there's something that the township would really like to see, we're happy to go back and?
Maybe I could fill in these and maybe suggest a conditional use, that we have our township landscape consultant just work with you on the design and fine tune it potentially, would you accept as a condition?
Absolutely. We did hire someone that was familiar with some of the ordinances of the township and she tried to do her best to address everything that you guys want to know. She would make the need and everything since we've had your short notice, but we'd definitely be willing to work with the landscape.
And actually, I guess is one of the items that brought up on the Trifter County Planning to consider conditional landscape itself, you may come up with some conditional suggestions.
We would definitely be willing to work with everybody on that.
Did you have anything else?
I have a couple more. I think I mentioned this last time, we discussed the development here, the redevelopment, and that is, would you accept the condition that you would not have any outdoor storage containers on the parking lot for interiors, et cetera? And would you agree not to lease any of the space, external space, to a third party for storage of trailers or other equipment?
Of course, we would never, you know, somebody said anything or any parts or property out to anyone else. As far as containers, the only containers that we have outside at any of our locations are recycle dumpsters and microtrash dumpsters. And we'd sense that they would make it like a sort of aesthetic in the township's landscape or whatever.
Okay, so that would be the case here, you would be putting new dumpsters in some location on this property or do they exist already?
I think there are some that exist already. Steve was talking about it.
They're gone now, but they were pretty much on the backside, very backside of the building.
Mr. Kelly, just for the board, just state your name and address.
Stephen Kelly, twenty-eight Aaron Island Ward. In Ocean Drive, Maryland.
Thank you.
And one last thing, I know you said that you don't believe there's any issue with emergency vehicle access to the property. I don't know if our fire marshals had a chance to look at this proposed renewed use for the property or not. I'm assuming there would probably be no issues, but would it be acceptable to have a condition that our fire marshal review this new use for emergency accessible fire and EMS service?
May I just, I understand what you're getting at, but my only caveat is that since we're not doing anything in terms of changing the circulation of the property, there's nothing new proposed here. So whatever's here is going to stay here.
Yep.
So we're happy to have the fire marshal take a look at it, but to the extent that she would ask for any external improvements on the site, it's probably not going to be acceptable to the applicant to make any changes to the current circulation of the site.
Yeah, I doubt there'll be any change needed, but just want to have our fire marshal review the situation.
And then what would the timeline be on that? If that's our big issue, if it's something that's a month out before we get, you know, approval back, then we can't.
Oh, I think.
As far as how quickly the fire marshal can look at it?
Yeah.
Oh, I think she could do that very quickly.
Within, I mean. Within this five-day period, we're waiting, sure.
Well, relatively quickly, however, I think would be more, she would be more looking at interior modifications associated with the fire.
That would happen to a building permit?
That would happen to a building permit.
I'm just used to these conditional uses, but we've got a new use or a new, and particularly it's land development that drives a review from whoever, just like it'd be able to, it's no issues.
Sure, I can have Andrew to look at this tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, Doctor.
Well, we'll address it that way then.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
That's all.
I just have a couple of follow-up questions for you, just more for my own clarification. So we are not going to be going through the land development process then because we're not adding any extra, saying the same footprint, correct? But I know you mentioned lighting and you're saying that you're going to meet our requirements of our ordinance as far as lighting is concerned. I'm just more curious about what that looks like at night? Are your lights on all night in the parking lot or how does that look?
It's really a soft facade type situation. And if you look at car dealerships, I would say it's half of what they have. So it's, it's a lot less bearing. Like the township, the lights that are currently there are fine and it's just some building lights that may be illuminated, but we've been in touch with AGI and they have looked at your codes and so when we apply for our permits and everything, interior and exterior, they're trying to do everything as much to good as possible, so.
Okay. Because it's just interesting, like you said, car dealerships tend to be extremely bright. And I know that we do have the point, which is right across the street and there are people there. So the other point of clarification that I want to make is the point zone residential?
Yeah.
It's not.
No.
What is the zone in for the point?
Same as it here.
No, it's not. It's zone I-2R, I-2R. It's like the.
I-2R is an industrial residential?
No, restricted.
Restricted.
Same thing that the partner across the street is, right across.
But watch for a problem.
I think what you'd see would fit in really nice with what's across the street and everything else that's around there, we would not stick out like this or not.
Oh, and I'm not implying that you would, I'm just trying to think of the way our ordinance is written about a budding residential and I just wanted to make sure that the point wasn't actually zoned as residential.
And not that, yeah, well, not that family, a lot of times it's up to commercial use, not as residential, but it's not zoned residential.
Yes, so it's zoned, it's in the I-2R light industrial district, restricted, is what it's titled.
If you ever have driven by a Rainy White store at night or media at nighttime, it's, you know, there's a few lights on inside, just some, you know, for security reasons and.
Sure.
And maybe a couple of soft lights outside, but there's nothing like this when we're in hours of operation.
Okay. All right, that answers my question. So there's no other questions?
I have two questions. Did you look at signage and whether or not a proposed sign here would meet the requirements of the code?
Whatever Harley's AGI designed for those buildings would be covered.
Okay. So you don't know yet and you can't talk to the board draft what you're proposing as far as a freestanding sign or anything, building signage?
I don't think they have a sign package together quite yet, but I know that the applicant has been very verbal with the architect saying whatever signage is made in post, you have to make a plan.
Okay. And then they asked a little bit about maintenance of vehicles. What about washing of, I don't know if you wash motorcycles, like you wash cars at dealerships, so does that happen? And where does that water go? Is that inside the building or outside the building?
Inside the building. A lot of times Harley's aren't necessarily, you know, it's not like they're taking them down the dirt road or trails or anything like that. So normally they don't even need washing, it's more detailing with dry things of that nature, but you really do have a wash area and there is a wash area inside the building already that has a grain and a water and everything right there and that we apply for our interior carpets and everything, everything to be laid out on the floor and then it will be covered.
Okay. Let's see if I have anything else. I think that was it.
Okay. So now is it time to open for public comment? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this conditional use application? Yes, Mr. White, can you use the microphone please?
I'd like to get that on the way. Here's, uh, this one. Can you hear me? Hope we can turn it off. Sorry. That was. That's us. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Okay. Doug White, Tenoon, Woodley Lane, West Goshen. What was my question? Sorry. Will you be doing repairs on motorcycles other than Harley-Davidson such as motocross derby bikes, things like that?
I would very rarely work on any size Harley's, but if somebody's broken down, we certainly assist anybody. If somebody were to come in with a motocross bike, we'd always have parts and things for that, something like that.
Okay, so it's strictly Harley-Davidson and?
We do take trainings of used motorcycles and stuff, so we do take it on at Charla House and so do these Galas, all the other brands. So we do work on, you know, everything that's going through our service department.
Okay. Will there be a designated area on the lot where if you're going to run motorcycles outside, there'll be some sort of way to, for noise abatement? Will that be done?
No, it's a, sorry, normal test ride, is what everybody knows.
Test ride, so if someone's going, if you're going to be running motorcycles onsite, are they going to be in a designated area that's going to be away from the apartments or just done in a manner where you're not going to bother anybody?
So you don't have to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you for the question.
Thank you, Dr. White. Is there any other comments on this application?
Chris, could you give us an idea what's going to happen from now, answer tonight and went to time later?
Sure, sure.
So we will have to wait the five days for the ordinance to be effective and then at your next meeting, I will prepare a draft decision that would have some of the conditions that we've talked about. I would show that with the applicant's counsel and the board would be prepared to render a conditional use approval on the nineteenth. The applicant would then need to submit a building permit application to have all the interior fit out that they want to do, which would include the lighting, the building lighting. That would be reviewed by your building code official, your fire department, fire marshal, excuse me. Some of the conditions, they would be working through some of those conditions, I believe, during that building permit process. And a use and occupancy permit would not be able to be issued until your zoning officer approved and said that they've done everything that your conditional use decision required and they've met all the building code requirements for the building code official. If they want to put up a sign on the building or a freestanding sign, that is also something that Shelby would handle as part of the zoning sign permit application.
All right. So then procedurally?
Procedurally, we can close the hearing and the board meets on March nineteenth, so we can expect to have something for the board to consider at that time.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you guys, thank you for everything over the last couple of months. I hope we end this very positively or favorably, but if not, I totally understand, we've asked for a lot here, so thank you very, very much for all your help and the long way. Our family could be more thankful for it, thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate your interest in bringing your business to West Meadows for sure.
It'll be great, it'll be a lot of fun and we'll work great with you guys if it does happen. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine, eight, thank you. Which is the discussion and possible approval of a proposal from Carol Engineering Corporation to complete a survey of the Fresh Meadows development in conjunction with the repair of storm sewers that had been allocated in the 2024 budget. Mr. Bayshore, would you like to introduce this?
Hi, it's my chair. So before the board supervisors this evening, it's consideration of a proposal from Carol Engineering Corporation for the completion of a survey related to the repair of storm sewer piping in the Fresh Meadows development. The township previously conducted televising of the development work to determine the pipe condition and that information was reviewed with the board in October twenty twenty-three. As part of the 2024 budget, the township did allocate just over one point nine million dollars towards this project based on an estimate that was provided and allocated costs across the American Rescue Fund, just under four thousand dollars, or four hundred thousand dollars, and the Capital Reserve Fund, just under one point six million dollars. On February twenty-second, representatives from the Streets Department, the Township Engineer and Chris Peterson from Carol Engineering met to discuss the project and the next steps. And based on this meeting, it's determined that a fair amount of the work may be completed in-house by the Streets Department. But we thought a survey from Carol Engineering would be beneficial to finding the exact locations and scheduling work. The proposal that's before the board is in the amount of $23,300 excluding item number five, which were legal descriptions, which would be $640. So it's going to depend on the number that are required. And if authorized, the cost for this work will be paid out of the American Rescue Fund allocation for this project. And the engineering costs were included in the budget allocation as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. So it's good to hear that a lot of this work can be done in-house. I think that's really good. Are there questions by the board?
Just one thing I'll add to that. So I did, I talked to Mark. And what we would do is we would spend the cost for materials out of the American Rescue Fund first. So that way we're utilizing those funds first before tapping into the township's funds and the Capital Reserve Fund since we're under a deadline in which to spend those.
And the $23,300 is Arva?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yeah, quick question for Kristen. Did Kristen, did you review the consulting contract terms and conditions from Carol? Have they properly modified them versus our previous?
Yeah, they indicated to me that in all projects going forward, they would use those revised terms.
And I believe Mr. Peterson included the 2024 general terms and conditions in this. And that incorporates Kristen's comments from before.
Very good. Thank you.
So the scope of this survey really is to establish the existing conditions of the site?
It's not to establish the existing conditions of the site. It's more to identify what's located in public right of way, what is located outside of the public right of way, what are we going to need easements for, things of that nature. Because when we talked about what Mark and Paul, Brian and Chris and I talked about, was looking at this from kind of a phased approach, doing what we can do in-house first. And then we will work on the easements that we need through Kristen's office. And this slide identified those for us.
And we don't know the number of easements yet. Is that correct?
Not entirely. Not entirely.
And is that the $640 each?
Those are the legal description that would be needed.
For each easement?
Correct. Because with the easement, so Kristen will prepare an easement document. And then there's a legal description in plan that Carol Engineering will prepare their company staff.
Okay.
And I'll note, I did have Brian, Brian couldn't be with us this evening. But I did have Brian look at it. And I'll just note kind of what he outlined for me. He said his only concern with the proposal is that they will provide 20 feet on each side of the pipe when it is outside of the right of way, but will stop at the right of way for any pipe within the right of way. My concern is that there may be something on a property just over the right of way that may be impacted by a pipe replacement just inside the right of way. If Carol Engineering can survey, tend to be beyond the right of way for any pipe within the right of way, but outside of the curb lines, it should be sufficient to pick up anything we may impact during the project. I think these can be forwarded to Carol Engineering and addressed as we go through the survey process.
Okay. We don't need to make that a condition or?
We can make a condition on addressing Brian's comments.
So we can have improvement tonight?
Yes, based on addressing the comments.
Addressing the comments.
Wouldn't that increase the cost if they have to take the survey attempt beyond the right of way?
We can work, I think we can work with Chris on that. And Mark said they can identify, they can, I talked to Mark about it. He thinks they'll be able to identify things beyond the right of way effectively.
And Chris, you're going to be notifying them on motor cycle?
Yes. Mark and I discussed doing either a CTY phone call or a letter. I think a letter might be more appropriate just because I don't know how many people are, I don't know how many people are actually signed up for our CTY program in that development. So I'm going to send a letter to them in advance of doing the surveys to notify them. And it'll be modeled very similarly on what Mike Moppa did for the West Halloway Pump Station earlier this year.
There's quite a few residences in that area.
There's a fair, fair amount in the development.
Okay. Would those letters have to be sent certified mail as proof?
No, they would just be sent regular mail.
We're finding that certified mail is actually less effective anymore. People don't pick them up.
Yeah, they don't, they don't pay, they get the green card and they don't pick it up.
They catch something bad and they don't want to have.
Yeah, so we would, we would do a mail notification once Chris gives me a date on when it's going to be done.
Okay. Great. Are there any other questions from the board?
Just to appeal to the survey. We previously did televising of the CMP in that area.
Correct, to get the, to determine the pipe condition, yes.
Right. But so this survey, is it going to reconcile that televised survey with what they'll give us to the township once they're done with their survey for identifying where the televised segments are within, you know, the Fresh Meadows area?
Yes, that's the intent. We do have an existing conditions, or an existing conditions plan, but it's not surveyed. It's pretty general from when we did that televising.
And our streets department really needs this survey to be done. They'll be able to determine where they need to go.
Exactly. We know, we know the pipe dimensions. We know the general locations. But we don't know like what's in, where we need easements and things like that. And that's what this is going to help reconcile.
Help keep it as down and so forth.
Most, we're actually, we were able to get a lot of depth down in-house. And we think our trench box system can reach the depths of everything that's currently, currently in this, in the field.
But also identifying if there needs to be utilities that are.
And I had talked to Mark this afternoon about it briefly. And he thinks we also might have some areas that we can do the shock grid lining like we did earlier, particularly on the southern part of the development where there's more, where there's wider pipe. Because if you get closer to like Fern Hill Road, that's like 15 inch pipe. And then as you get further down, it becomes larger. So we might be able to line some of those areas as well. So Mark's going to evaluate that too.
Great.
Which is, Chris, do you have any idea how old this is?
I believe that development was built in the eighties. So it's probably original to the development.
Maybe 40 years ago.
Potentially, yes. But I remember, I do recall when we televised it, Mark's response was that it wasn't as, in as bad of condition as he thought it was going to be.
Good. All right. Is there a motion then to approve this proposal from Carol Engineering to complete the survey at Fresh Meadows? I guess with the understanding that we're going to follow up with Carol Engineering about the increased?
With, I will send the Brian's comments.
Okay.
So we.
I'd like to modify that to at the moment, but not to exceed the $23,300.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I'll make the motion to.
Okay.
With the exception of the descriptions, you want to add that to it?
Not like that.
It's not included.
It's not included.
Not including.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Nate. Is there any public comment on this motion? No, here, yes.
This is one of the property or one of the projects that was on the Carol Engineering?
Yes.
It actually was, it actually was not. It was added after, it was added after the fact. Because if you recall, we had the 16 property priority areas and this was not part of it. And we added in this property, the one on Ash Bridge that we submitted the grant for, and one other one for Bull Bridge. And that's correct for, for televising. So this was, this is kind of part of the study, but it was added kind of after the analysis was completed.
I like the fact that we're starting to get the numbers from the actual.
All right, thanks. Great. We'll take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Chris, just want to follow up on that. So I know the, the video data, the video information showed it wasn't in bad a shape as we initially thought. So when we get into the actual project itself, we're, we're going to focus on areas that we know need addressing. We're not going to be digging up pipe that we haven't looked at. Could well be in good shape.
Yes. And the plan is to start from, the plan is to start from the section closest to North Hill because we can get smaller pipe relatively quicker and then work our way south. Yeah, that's the plan.
What's the timeline? When, when do you anticipate we can start? The Streets Department is starting to work here?
Probably in spring. The one thing that we probably would need to sub out would be curb work. Our crew, they can do small sections of curb. But if we start getting to longer run, curb runs, we probably need to bring in a contractor to help us things out.
And we said we have someone to talk to.
Yep, we can talk, we can talk. We have plenty of firms that we can talk to go do that kind of work.
Okay. Good stuff. All right.
Was there a vote?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number nine, which is the discussion and possible approval of the following resolutions adopting five-year asset smoothing in the actuarial valuations for the West Coshen Township's pension plans. Now, are we taking these each individually?
Yes, my chair.
Okay. So the first resolution is for, is resolution number nine dash 2024, adopting a five-year asset smoothing method for the West Coshen Township Police Pension Plan. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this resolution?
Just, just some comments. I mean, I had a fair discussion with Chris and some others about the approach here. And, you know, that the process itself to me is, is not the best it could be. Because if you think about it, we're doing an actuarial valuation of the assets in these funds as of 1-1-23. We're here in 3-24. And we're talking about the contribution that won't be made to these pension plans until the fall of 2025, which is two and a half years later than the actuarial evaluation. It's, this is how, you know, these assessments are done. They're all compliant with the Act of State in terms of what we have to be compliant with. But it's, you know, just, it's just a comment I'm making. It's not the best way to manage it. So given that you've got this big lag, I think some kind of smoothing makes sense. So in my opinion, I, I've come to the conclusion that I would support the smoothing approach. Because if you think about it, again, 23 valuation was at the end of 2022, which was a poor year for stock market, long forms, both were down. Yet we've seen a large rebound during 2023. So the funding ratio of these, these pension funds is actually much better today than it was in January 2023. So I think a smoothing of some of these ups and downs and swings that we see in the, the asset markets is, is a good, better approach.
Right, it's really to manage the volatility of the market, right?
Yes.
I mean, in terms of our contributions each year not being like these peaks and valleys, I think is.
Correct. So just to, just to give, just to, I did do an analysis on what the comparison would be in terms of the increase to our MMO as well as to the general sewer funds, since that's where the impact would be felt.
I'm sorry, I should have let you introduce this. You have a lot of information here. Go ahead.
That's quite, that's quite, all right. So the current, so using the current market value would result in a 62.5% increase to the MMO in 2025. So it would be roughly $716,000. Utilizing an asset smoothing approach, which spreads out the market volatility as Mr. Walsh was discussing, the MMO would increase by 19% compared to 2024. So you're talking roughly a 42, 43% swing in terms of the MMO.
How do we have these estimates? Or is that just beyond?
How do we have the estimates?
Yeah.
The actuary looks at, actuary looks at anticipated benefit payouts and benefit payments, like the liabilities against the plan versus the value of those assets. And as Mr. Walsh indicated, she's utilizing the value of assets at 1-1-20-23 in compliance with the laws of Pennsylvania. And that creates the funding ratio. And because 2022 was such a volatile market year, your funding ratio is going to be down. When you do asset smoothing, you spread that out over a set period of time. I know it says five-year asset smoothing, but the township can choose to go back to market value because we've been seeing rates of return in the market that have been helping to soften a lot of those losses that were experienced.
Even as soon as next year?
Potentially, yes. But you're not going to get another value. Valuations are done in odd years, every two years. So you're not going to get another valuation until 2025. And you may not have that for your 2026 MMO. So you're probably looking at two, at least two years of utilizing this.
Well, since you're on that topic that you just mentioned, that was one of the questions, actually. Since we could convert back to a market valuation for the 1-1-25 valuation period, shouldn't the ordinance be for a one or max two-year smoothing at the period versus five?
You want to do five years because you don't know what the market is going to be like.
Yeah.
It sets you up to level it out.
Okay.
And now in terms of the budgetary impact, the budgetary impact because of the size of West Coshen Township's budget is not as significant. So if you look at the expenses for 2024 in the general and sewer fund, they're just, they're roughly between 29 and 30 million dollars combined. So you're talking about using market value at a 2.4% expenditure increase. So you're not talking about a large number. However, when you compound those with other projects and costs that we know we're going to be experiencing in 2025 potentially, they're going to, they're going to add up. So if you go to asset smoothing and you look at the budgetary impact, it's 0.7% in terms of the overall budget impact. So it's a combination of the MMO impact and the budgetary impact on the township.
Finally, who is Ashley Watts? She's making this recommendation. Who is she?
She is our actuary with Conrad Siegel. She replaced Mr. Killick, who retired in June or July of 2023. So she took over when he retired.
Is this something we could unpaste our auditing off of? We do have a third location, I think?
They need this for the audit. So I don't think you, they would want to. And this isn't, this is actuarial science. It's not really what you audit.
No, 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 it's totally different.
I'm not saying they could, they couldn't do it. Um, it's not really what they're charged with doing.
Chris, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, the, the five years that you, that you use to determine this estimated 2025, I don't know, what, what is the five-year period that you would be using?
So it'd be 2023, three, four, five, six. 2023 through 2027 is when they would be factored into the smoothing period.
But what's the calculation you use in terms of determining the MMO 2025 contribution? You don't know what the data is for the smoothing, right?
Well, that's the only question.
I, I can't really answer that question about actuary. But she did, Ashley did provide the estimated, estimated MMO impact for 2025.
Yeah, that numbers are real.
Yes, that came from her. Came directly from her.
All right. So is there a motion then to adopt resolution number nine dash 2024 approving, let's see, the use of assets moving for the police pension plan?
Can we not make the motion to adopt all three resolutions?
Since there are three separate pension plans, we should do three separate resolutions.
I think you can do one motion.
Do you make so?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the motion there, you move into approval.
I defer to Ms. Campbell.
Are we going to go through all three?
They're all essentially the same.
Yeah, it's the same language, right?
They're the exact same language. The names of the five.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve resolution number nine, number 10, number 11, 2024, where we will adopt a five-year smoothing method to determine the actuarial value of assets effective of January 1, 2023 valuation.
For the police administrative, road employees, and sewer?
Yeah, it's all three resolutions.
Great. Thank you, John. Is there any public comment on this motion? Yes, Mr. White, you're right.
So just so I understand, you, you want to smooth out the, the amount that we're going to be funding these pensions to make it a little more predictable and to avoid having large obligations when markets play out?
No, what it does is it realizes the volatility in the market over a longer period of time to avoid large spikes, like a 63% spike in the MMO. Instead, it spreads it out over a period of time.
That's what I think you were implying, right? That, I think that's what you said, right? It's to more, it would be more predictable as well as.
It'll be more predictable. It will be, it will realize it over a longer period of time as opposed to a large shot. Because if you, if you, and this is something Mr. Walsh and I discussed. You have a pension plan like West, or a township like West Coshen that has, you know, large financial assets that can afford these types of spikes. But you have an option there to kind of spread it out and make the pain less over a period of time. But think of it like a, think, I like to think of it as kind of like mortgage payments.
Okay, so, so the reason I'm asking, I'm probably very bothered with this twenty years. And I've never heard him mention this sort of thing before. Is there a risk that we could be underfunding the pensions?
It won't let you. The minimum municipal obligation is the state law that says what the township must, must contribute to the pension. It won't let you.
Okay, so this is just an option to make it more predictable. But there's always the option to fund it more if you want.
Yes. And in fact.
No, we're just wondering what that noise is. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're trying to figure out the cloud.
Yes.
Isn't the, isn't?
Okay, I guess, my concern is there, if there's any downside of doing it this way, but you can do it this way, but go back to the old way. For free.
You can't, in fact, the 2009 and 2011 value shows. So this was done in the past.
The, the risk is actually that you're going to overfund. Because if you're using a valuation where market assets were down as a 1-1-23, and you say, okay, I need to put a bigger MMO in. And now here we are where there's been a recovery of that asset value. Now you're overfunding these pension plans to smoothing it out to, to the discussion that we've had means that you try to take out these troughs and peaks and have a more steady level of contribution.
Okay, well, it's a good thing if it allows you more options and you can always. Okay, well, it's a good thing if it allows you more options, and you can always do it the other way if you want. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to discussion item number 10, which is a discussion on possible approval of an updated designation of agent resolution with the PA Emergency Management Agency for West Ocean Township. Chris?
Madam Chair, so before the board this evening is an updated designation of agent resolution with FEMA. By way of background information, FEMA recently contacted the township, indicating that they're in the process of closing out FEMA grants that were issued in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. In order formally close out this process, the township will need to update the signer information on file with FEMA through a new designation of agent resolution. The information on file currently lists the former township manager, the authorized signer, and the proposed document for the board this evening to change that designation to FEMA.
Okay, so pretty straightforward, we're just making you designate?
That is correct.
I have a question. Should there also be language to remove Casey, as there's language to add Chris?
This is the document that came directly from FEMA that told me to present to, that I was pulled to present.
So that means he's still on, because we've got documentation saying he should be off of it.
What they told me was that this will update what's on file, so this would remove him, effectively.
Is there only allowed to be one that we need?
As far as I know.
Okay. I'm sure if there's an issue, you can have a conversation with them.
Yep.
Any other question?
That's pretty good.
They probably have to close stuff out with FEMA, and that prompted them to come back.
So then is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
Okay. I'll second. Thanks, Tina. Is there any public comment on this motion? No, okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number 11, which is the discussion and possible appointment of the following individuals to the respective boards and committees of West Ocean Township. The first individual is Michael Bonner, for the alternate member to the zoning hearing board, and the second individual is David Johnson to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. The board had a discussion and an interview with Mr. Bonner. We had an opportunity to ask him some questions, and board members, you have a copy of his resume in front of you. Are there any comments or questions related to appointing Mr. Bonner to the zoning, as an alternate member to the zoning hearing board? No, okay, hearing none. Is there a motion then to appoint Mr. Bonner, Mr. Michael Bonner, as an alternate member to the zoning hearing board?
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Bonner as alternate member to the zoning hearing board.
I'll second.
All right, thanks very much. Is there a comment on the motion from the public? No, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then moving on to David Johnson, as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I think we currently have two vacancies on the committee, or no?
Uh, there is.
I guess we have none now.
There's currently one, uh, which have appointed Mr. Johnson.
Well, so, okay. And again, you should have his resume in front of you. Mr. Johnson came to the last Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting and met with the committee who voted to recommend his appointment to the board. If there are any questions or comments by the board members? No? Right. Is there a motion to appoint David Johnson to the Sustainability Advisory Committee?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thanks very much. Is there any public comment on the motion? Yes, Dr. White? Yes, he did mention that years ago, yeah. Yes.
Okay, he went, he went, yeah, he was on the server.
He's a good man, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, then, uh, hearing no more comment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations to Mr. Bonner and Mr. Johnson. And Chris, I assume you'll note a lot of them that they have been approved and wanted. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 12, which is the approval of board supervisors' meeting minutes from February 6, 2024. Are there any major changes to the meeting minutes, not including typos?
I just have, there's like the, page six, there's a diagram on the bottom. It's just reading that, I do, I think that the, the amount of the total was $23,000. For the fourth phase of improvements to the West Ocean Township. This is $23,000 for design for, so we could just clarify that. And he actually did a good job on the, uh, the page five. He just put the same word. Before the board, this guy is taking it personally, before the board, is for consideration of a vertical design, building and construction service, in kind of a corporation for, for the first phase of improvements to the West Ocean Township. Let me just clarify, it's from the end of that.
All right, thanks, John. Any other comments? If there are typos, you can forward them to Chris, and we will amend those. So is there a motion to approve the supervisors' meeting minutes from February 6, 2024?
So moved.
And if you shall, is there a second? Thanks, Nate. Is there any public comment on the motion? Right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And finally, number 13, the approval of the bills to be paid for the general fund, the sewer fund, excuse me, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. Are there any questions or comments on the bills to be paid?
I had two questions. I'm just curious on age. I don't know what age.
Is it manual portion?
Yeah, it's on the manual, the bill list will be listed. Second page, I guess it said, there's no number on it, I thought it was the second page. Yeah, what are retirement badges?
Uh, those are badges that are purchased for retired police officers, and they're purchased for office, those aren't available.
Oh, okay. And then the other thing is, um, there's $2,328.50 for a traffic camera, RODO, Volo? What is that? What is that? Do we relocate one of our cameras? Traffic cameras?
Page two.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on page, next page, three, at the top. There's $2,328. Looks like the traffic cameras were relocated maybe?
Uh, I would have to ask the chief on that one.
Okay. Seems like a lot of money.
That's in the police department, that might be either relocating or maintenance, or that might be the contract with the company.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So.
All right, and if any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Thank you, John.
I'll second.
And Tina, is there any public comment on the bills to be paid for these funds? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.[1747.75]